Good evening, and I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education to order. And we'd like to begin with a moment of silence this evening. Now please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'm going to read our mission statement this evening. I should have it memorized. "The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community." That brings us to the first item on our agenda this evening, which is some anti-bullying activities that are occurring here in our district. And I'd like to invite Mindy Fisher up to address us tonight. Mindy?
Hello all. Like Shanalee said, I'm Mindy Fisher, and I'm the district's learning support specialist. So hopefully this is going to turn on in a second, so you can see the PowerPoint. It's blinking. There it goes. So, as you all know, October is Anti-Bullying Month. So, and I realize that it's very far off from right now, here we are at the end of March. But even though the month of October is Anti-Bullying Month, we do many things in the district throughout the entire school year to promote anti-bullying. So we wanted to give you a little update of what we've been doing throughout the year, but also what we're heading into. This spring's been a very busy spring for us, so we're getting ready to gear up for a lot of exciting opportunities. So just showing you guys a little bit, but one of the things we started last year is we have a district-wide anti-bullying pledge that all of our students sign as part of the registration packet. And then also this year, all of our secondary students received a pledge card that they got to keep from Stand for the Silent, reminding them that they are somebody important to us. So that was way cool. The League of Caring Students helped purchase these for all of those secondary students. And then up here, also this year got involved with the Early Childhood Program because we know that bullying prevention starts with early intervention. And so Elk Run, our Early Childhood Center, one of them, did lots of skits and learning about anti-bullying and what bullying is and what it isn't. So they got to be involved with that. Becker students had a whole bunch of different things going on, including that they read announcements every day. They had five members of the League of Caring Students come and present to them. And what's really cool about that picture that you guys see up there is all of those students are Central Middle School students that are Becker alumni. So it was cool for the Becker kids to talk about leadership opportunities as they're moving forward in their academic career. And a lot of the things that they did is decorating the building and talking a lot about anti-bullying. And then they even had some fun with Red Ribbon Week and doing a mustache theme. And then Dr. Walter Cunningham, they also did a lot of wonderful things, including reading daily announcements and talking about... They started a 5th grade anti-bullying club that they call ABCs, which is way cool because it also leads into our middle school group. They signed pledges that they put up in the hallways and talked about the different things and showing the video that the middle school kids worked on. And then here's some more pictures from Highland, who also had an anti-drug focus. And they watched a movie called "The Bully Dance", and so they had a lot of fun with getting the students talking about what bullying is and then also getting the idea of reporting in their heads. Irving had a lot of fun with their Go Orange Day. Orange Day is a day in October that they promote for unity. The League of Caring Students also talked to 3rd graders there. They went to all the 3rd grader classrooms and spoke to the kids about bullying and what it is and what it isn't. And what was really cool about that day is I happened to be taking the kids around. One of the little girls talked about how she was a target in front of her classmates that often target her. And so that was a big step forward because some of the classmates said, "I'm sorry", which is a huge step to preventing bullying, is making people realize how it makes kids feel. So that was super cool, and I almost had a tear in my eye that day. And one of my girls from Central did cry, so that was really very heartwarming. And then the Go Blue Day is an anti-bullying movement as well in October, so they also had fun with the Go Blue Day. Kingsley had some Say Boo to Drugs. They had both the anti-drug and the anti-bullying focus. And the 5th grade students made posters with the theme "Be a Buddy, Not a Bully", which those posters were super cute as well, so hopefully some of you got to see some of those. And then Kitchell Students, they had a focus on one by Catherine Otoshi, who is a beautiful author. She talks about red being hot and blue is not. And so she uses colors to introduce the idea of bullying and having people stand out in different ways. So it's kind of a cool little book that we use in our curriculum with counselors. Lincoln did some door decorating as well, and they had their Red Ribbon pledges. And then they had a lot of fun with the kids signing different things, and the kids really got involved. And we know that the kids are the key to keeping bullying out of our schools. Lou Henry had several anti-bullying lessons, including that all of the kids got stickers and pencils. And there was a lot of bullying facts that went around the building, and the kids came up with some of those and did some research on those. So that was kind of cool that the kids started to like really honor that idea of what bullying is. And Lowell had some fun with daily announcements as well, and they also had some fun dress-up ideas. And the pictures they have are so funny, but they had a growl-off contest just to like the idea of, you know, getting your feelings out there, I guess, is that it's okay to growl and it's okay. And so they had a lot of fun with that. And then Orange also did some Red Ribbon Week things, but they also had a lot of pledge signing and some different things that they put around their building and in their classrooms to remind them that the students are also responsible for stopping bullying. It's not just adults. And part of being a leader is to not have bully behavior, so that was kind of cool. And then, of course, they had the most fun with Orange Day being Orange Elementary, so they couldn't resist having all these pictures of beautiful kids in orange. Pointer also did a whole bunch of different things, including having the League of Caring Students present to 3rd graders, which was really neat because it was Bunker students that presented to the Pointer students. So they also saw the idea of the leadership opportunity as they move forward in their academic careers. But it was pretty cool in the 3rd grade classroom because the kids really had a lot of great questions for the middle school students who really took charge of answering what those are, what it means to have a bully behavior, what it means to be a friend, and then what's the difference between that and conflict. And so they had a lot of really good questions, and the kids had a lot of fun with it as well. And there was only two Bunker students that presented to all of the 3rd graders, so that was a big responsibility for them. And Pointer had fun with the Blue Day. And then, of course, we had, you know, our district-wide events was the Blue and the Unity Day, but then also three members of the League of Caring Students. And the picture there happens to be an East High student, a West High student, and a Central Middle School student who gave up an entire night and went to every city council meeting in Evansdale, Cedar Falls, and Waterloo and presented to each of those city boards. And they all signed the same pledge that you guys signed back in October, declaring October is Anti-Bullying Month. And the kids did all of the talking, and it was very fun for them to get to see the process at the city level and how that works. And it was a big aha moment, and I only had to feed them McDonald's. So that was good bribery. The newsletter went out to all of our families, which included our October Anti-Bullying Newsletter. This year, that same newsletter is being designed by the West High students that graduated from the League of Caring Students who are now at West. So they're working on that. They're actually going to bring that to a meeting tomorrow. So I'm interested to see what they've come up with versus what we've done in the past. And then, as you guys know, the League of Caring Students formed in November of 2013, and they've had a big mission statement about not looking down on someone unless you're helping them up and being a model of kindness. And so they really took that to heart this year. And below all the statements is pictures of the kids. But they actually were invited by a U&amp;I professor to come talk to some pre-service educators about what bullying is and what kids see. And he sent us the most heartfelt thank you. One of the students spoke from the heart that she talked about even if you disagree with a student's choices, you still have to accept them for being a student. And she was talking about the rights of gay and lesbian students. And she was really talking about making sure that, you know, teachers aren't judging students for their choices. And so the teacher, he said, he's like, "I couldn't have paid you to say that with any more passion and delivery, and she's only a 7th grader, and so I have a lot of confidence in her future, and she's amazing student." And then, of course, we presented those council meetings. But also wanted to let you know on other things that the League of Caring Students have been doing, which includes this list of, they've been, thanks to Tara, actually, they've been invited to speak on KBBG a couple times about their efforts and the things that they're doing. They've been able to donate money to Kirk Smalley's Stand for the Silent. And as you know, he has come to our district a couple times. Once where we brought several middle schools, all of our middle school students together, really, at least representation from all of the schools together. And then he also came to a community night at East High and has really impacted a lot of our students. And he has made a huge contribution. So the kids wanted to do different things. And they came up with a fundraiser of selling the Stand for the Silent gear. And Kirk brought that to us, so we didn't have to pay for any shipping or anything. And then they sold it to friends and family, and they were able then to donate some of that to him. But then Kirk is so cool that we also were able to have a fund. So some of that money went to the kids. So some of the things that they do when they have meetings and stuff, I can feed them. And that's part of how they bought the pledge cards and the different things that they've been doing around the districts and buying the anti-bullying bracelets and the different things like that. So they've been able to do that. And then one of the cool things the kids came up with because of their mission statement is they started challenging people to random acts of kindness. So part of the presentation that they do to the elementaries is to challenge the kids to do random acts of kindness. And then if the teachers catch them being kind, they get an anti-bullying bracelet. And one of the things that was way cool is the Central Group, they have an MTSS group called Team Awesome. And that team isn't necessarily the League of Caring Students, but they took that idea of that random act of kindness. They put positive messages on Post-Its and put Post-Its under every student's desk during first hour. And then at five minutes before first hour was over, they did an announcement that says, "Please check under your desk for a compliment today." And some of the reactions that the kids had to that were amazing. One of the girls said, "How did they know I was an artist?", because the compliment said, "You're an awesome artist." And she was like, "How did they know? How did they know I sat here?" And it was just, it was very funny. It was so much fun to do and to see their reactions. And the kids were super proud because even though the TLCs weren't responsible for that, they were ultimately the ones that came up with the idea, so it was pretty cool. And then Bunker had their own calendar that they did. They had a lot of fun with chalk and different things. And then they had a lot of outdoor fun. And then, you know, I love the bottom picture with the pie in the face idea. And that was students, you know, raising funds as well. Whoever had the most had the pie in the face. Central had a lot going on with teaming up against bullying. They had a, the J-Line Dance Crew came, and they had a video on for a while. And then they had the NFL speaker come, and he was so amazed at their artwork out front of their building, was super impressed about how much they were emphasizing that. And so he left them some books, and then part of his, he went over to Bunker as well because part of his fee is he does two schools in a day. So they partnered, and he went to Bunker and to Central. The Hoover kids have been really working on being leaders as well, and they've been partnering a lot with Lou Henry, giving student tours to 5th graders and different things. And then part of that, their promotion is Caring Kindness Connections. And one of the things they came up with is they wanted extra ways for kids to report. So part of that is we started our text line this year. And we also started the email line because kids are more text savvy than we give them credit for. Before, we had the voicemail line, and it wasn't as utilized as much. But we get probably an email or an anonymous report online maybe once every couple weeks. There's, it's actually quite a few. And what's really interesting, oops, sorry, I went the wrong way. What's really interesting for me on that one is that one of the kids that reported on the bully website, I asked the administrator to investigate, and the administrator discovered that it was a hoax. They didn't think anyone was investigating these. And so when he investigated, the student almost was in tears because he's like, "I didn't do it, but I know who did." And he was like willing to tell, and he's like, "I didn't think anyone took these seriously." And so he called in all the students that did it, and he said, "We do take these all very seriously, and we're very much about making the school safe for all of us." And so the students were really impressed because the turnaround on that was less than 12 hours. So it's getting the message out there that we do take these all seriously. We also had some movie nights during that month. Who Cares About Kelsey is very much a PBIS video. Kelsey's a student that's really hard to love and endure. And through some interventions, she makes it to graduation, but she was very much a 5th-year senior and on the track of not graduating. The kids really liked that. We had kids come from out of district. Jessup, Dunkerton, Independence came and visited with this movie, which was really cool. And then we also showed it at the Expo Parent Night. The Bully movie we also showed, and it was shown on PBS. So that was kind of neat. And the kids, it was kind of funny too because a lot of the kids were emailing me, "Did you know our movie is on PBS?" Like, "Did you know it's not our movie?" "We like it, but it's not ours." So the kids were pretty excited about that. East High made some pretty cool t-shirts, and they sold them to the student body, and then they allowed them to wear it on Spirit Day, which was really nice on two different accounts. One is it gets the message out there, and two, the students then got to add that to their spirit collection, I guess. And it was a nice bright orange color, so. And then Expo always does an amazing job with their anti-bullying, including that they attended the Governor's Conference, not this year, but last year. And they were superheroes. They had these great shirts and all this, all great information. And they also present to elementary students. And so they've kind of done that on their own, and they have that whole week where they renew their pledge of I am somebody. And so if the kids don't have it, they actually get them extras so that everybody has it during that week, which is pretty neat. West High had daily facts in their announcements. And then they also showed the Stand for the Silent video that the League of the Caring Students did. And I believe we've shown that to you before, but in case you wanted to see it, the link is there. That's why it's blue. So you're welcome to watch that, but I won't waste your time about it tonight. And then our proclamation for the month went out to everybody via Tara's office again. So that was kind of the end of the slideshow. But I wanted to talk to you guys a little bit tonight about how our focus has changed quite a bit from... Can I turn this off, Pam, or does it need to be on for someone else? We have changed from a reporting aspect of anti-bullying to getting students involved because we know that students are the key to stopping bullying. Something like 90% of bullying happens right in front of the teacher, and adults just don't recognize it as bullying. It can be a look, it can be a name-calling, it can be a lot of different things. And so we've really started involving students as much as possible. And so we've gotten them into taking this hands-on approach. And so we've got some additions for next year for our students, but we also, like I said, have additions for this spring. So April 9th, the League of Caring Students will participate in Culture Fest and hand out our reporting card that has all of the ways in the Waterloo district that you can report anti-bullying. And what's nice about this card is the kids, when they hand these out, they tell the students, "Put these in your phone now because you don't need a card later." And so that's one of the good tips that the kids hand out, which is great, and it's great to be part of Culture Fest. And then, this is the big announcement, is April 14th is the Character Counts Awards Dinner. The League of Caring Students were nominated and will receive the award as youth citizens of character for the Cedar Valley. And you guys will get more on the Character Count stuff, but I wanted to include that with them tonight. We're also going to participate on April 20th in the Engaging Communities Empowering Victims, which is a safety seminar being held at the Sportsplex. So we're going to be doing that. And then Crystal Buzz is also here, but she invited us to possibly have the League of Caring Students be involved with the Speaking Volumes Transforming Hate, which is part of the Waterloo Center for the Arts. It's a traveling exhibit out of South Dakota. And they are, they're books and art from basically a cult that have been transferred into artwork. And the students are going to find a way of participating in that, and that exhibit's going to be around from June 10th to about mid-September. And those dates are kind of, they might move a little bit, but the kids are really excited to be part of that. And we have actually a meeting tomorrow with them from 11:00 to 1:00 over at Central. So they wanted me to make sure that if you guys would like to come, that you were invited to come and hear what they do and see the work that they're doing. And then also, we just wanted to let you guys know that this year we have been, have trained all the administrators during the June retreat on bullying investigation because we still have to have that reactive side of, we're being as proactive as we can, but we still have to have that reactive side. So we've trained all the administrators. And then Jamie Dunn and I are actually going this week to another training at Drake University on bullying investigation. And when we come back, we plan to have some trainings for the investigative teams at the building. So every building has their own bullying investigation team, and we're hoping to provide them with some more ongoing training. So that kind of concludes everything I have to say except that our vision that we have in Student Services and in Waterloo Schools is to have all of our schools be safe and supportive for all of our students, which aligns with, you know, the board's vision as well and our mission. And so if you guys had any questions or any comments, I would invite you to come up or to come visit with some of the students and see what the work that they're doing.
Mindy, you mentioned a lot of dates coming up here.
Yeah.
If you could get that information to Pam.
I will.
And then we could maybe get a copy of that, so if we are interested.
Yeah.
And maybe even put that available on the website for anybody to see.
Yeah, that's a really great idea. Thank you.
I think it's a, it sounds like a real comprehensive program with the basic message is be nice.
Right.
Which is, you know, the omission here or the thing I'm wondering about is, I don't see anything in the policy or not much. You mentioned some text reporting, but the whole issue of cyberbullying, which I think is a significant part. I'm not sure in our district, but generally speaking, it is. So I'm just wondering, I know there's some larger questions on how much authority a school district has, especially legal authority, how much responsibility they have, especially legal responsibility. So do we have anything in mind in terms of addressing that? Maybe directly to the students explaining, you know, inappropriate cyberbullying.
Yeah, that's, that's actually one of the topics on tomorrow's agenda is to see if the kids can come up with some sort of a campaign for the idea of cyberbullying. Because all we can use right now currently in our authority is if it interrupts the educational setting. So if a student on Facebook or Twitter or whatever threatens another student, says, "I'm going to beat you up at school tomorrow", then it impacts that other student's right to a free and public education, and then we have authority. So right now, we can kind of use that for us, but students don't realize what they're putting out there online, if it affects the school day the next day, that they can be held accountable for it. So you're absolutely right, and it's something that is definitely, I'm, one of the kids during the interview on KBBG, he, Tara, said, "So what advice do you have out there for parents when it comes to cyber and internet bullying?" And he said, "Let your kids be kids. Don't let them, don't offer the internet up to just everything." And it was the coolest speech. I had to like write it down because I want to take that to the kids tomorrow, and he's part of our team. But I want to make sure the kids are thinking about that. And we really want to make that, some of the outreaches that we're doing in April and May, we want the kids to hear that message as they're moving forward to summer about the online and internet and social media bullying, so.
So then internally, do we have sort of an administrative process when we do get that information to Pam?
It's currently on the list of methods of bullying. It's written, physical, verbal, social isolation, or computer. And so that's one of the methods that can be marked. And so if kids do it, and we have lots of great partnerships with the Waterloo Police Department about if we need to get something online. But the thing about technology is kids think things go away, like Snapchat goes away. If you screenshot it, it doesn't go away. And then we know that there's actually technology out there that allows it to not go away. So amazingly enough, the victims are actually taking proactive measures and making sure that they're documenting what's happening to them because some of the investigations, we do have tons and tons of paper tied to it of the documentation from online stuff, so.
So is that part of the message that we're actively sending then? That if you receive a text that you feel is, you know, is a form of bullying, that you document it and report it?
Yeah, and you wouldn't, you would be surprised at the number of Facebook investigations we're doing.
So you're informing the, you're informing the kids that this is what they need to do.
Yeah.
You're kind of educating them and what to do about it.
Yep.
And at the same time, you're advising others.
That it will be done.
That you'll be held responsible.
Yeah. When we do investigations, we tell the kids they're not allowed to talk about the basis of the investigation, but we encourage them to talk about how social media can get you into trouble. So we, I mean, we encourage them to talk about that social media aspect of it. And then we also do some trainings with all of those students about what you put out there and how long it exists and how it can continue to exist even if you take your page down. And so I kind of feel like the kids actually probably know better than us. And so they've taught me a lot of the social media stuff that I know. I've just, especially the kids on the anti-bullying group, but even the kids who have been victimized. They teach me how to do the Snapchat. They've taught me how to do the Twitter. All of those things that I'm not proficient at as a technology not junkie, total opposite. So they've actually been helping me kind of get more into doing that, and so they've really done a lot. And they probably know more than we, more than they're teaching me still, so.
So in the intermediate and high school level, is the social media bullying is probably more the way bullying is happening?
Yeah, and it's really at the middle school level more than any other level. At the high school level, the kids, I think, I don't know if it's just they have enough resiliency built up or what, but the kids are not, at the high school levels, they tend not to report bullying. And I don't do a ton of investigations at that level, but the intermediate level is definitely very much aware.
Mindy, our middle school and our high school students do a code of conduct at the beginning of the year. I wonder if, I know we have a piece in there about bullying just in general, but it might be worth adding a bullet or changing that piece to make sure that we include social media and what bullying. You know, you listed off those five things.
Yeah.
You know, that'd be a good place for it because then they all see it. At least when they sign it, they see it.
Yeah, I like that idea. And I think because even if it's not bullying, it can still be against the code of conduct.
Or inappropriate use of, right. So maybe that'd be a spot for it there.
And we do have the technology violation, so that's part of the referral system that we use and the district-wide expectations on the use of technology and not technology. But I don't know that kids always transfer that to the home life. Because one of the meetings I had last year with a family was, it was a mom. And she said, "But my kid did this, but it was at home on my computer on his Facebook account. It had nothing to do with school." And I said, "But your son threatened to harm another student at school the next day." And so it was a big, it was a big aha moment for her. She really didn't think we had any kind of legal precedent to do anything for or against him because it was, everything was at home.
And you also mentioned, you explained what's not bullying. I mean, you know, that's so subjective, and I don't know if it's totally in the eyes of the beholder, but for some students, some people, you know, every roll of the eyes is bullying.
Right.
It can be interpreted as that, whether it is or not. And so I think as clear as we can to draw those distinctions is important.
That's a big part of the counselor curriculum, is what, what is bullying and what is not bullying. A huge part of the counseling curriculum at all levels.
And I would add this. I think this is such a big topic right now at the state level. The, you've, you've probably read some of the, um, news articles on the governor's anti-bullying campaign and some of the legislation that is coming out and still in the works. There's bills and amendments, and they're still trying to decide exactly what that will look like. But, um, I just saw that this summer for the school administrators of Iowa, for our, our big kind of statewide training, which is in August, they're doing one full day on bullying and how to identify it and how to prevent it. And then what do you do once, if, if it's happened, so.
And that same trainer is who we brought in in August.
I saw that.
So that's what's really super cool is that we're, we're utilizing one person. So we're getting a whole message for, as a state from one person.
Right, I saw that. And she's really, I think she's kinda the premier trainer for almost the whole state. She's, yeah.
Yep.
I just have one quick question. How do you become, how do you become part of the group? How are those students selected?
Um, so originally, we just, I just asked the, um, middle school counselors to bring me down a group of students to talk about bullying. And that group, um, decided to form a group. So we were gonna have a one-time meeting to get some student input, and the students said, "Yeah, one time's not enough for us." Um, and if they could, they would meet every week. And I don't, honestly, I don't think we could pull them out of classes that much. So those, those students became the core group. We meet quarterly. Other students can join. Um, they only need to request it through their counselor. But there are some rules, and the number one is that you cannot be investigated for bully-like behavior. Um, I have had a couple of students receive some warnings, cause they weren't necessarily having the bully behavior, but they were on the outskirts of it. Um, and so if they have that, they're dropped from the group. And then any students, um, Bungar, for instance, they put it out there just like student council. So students can run for it, and then, um, they have four or five members that can join. Typically, it's four or five students per school, but I have nine students at Hoover, just because the building's so much bigger. So it just depends, but it's really about interest level. And it's the kids' passion, because they are doing so many things outside of the school day and meetings and extra things. They have to be committed to working, cause I shoot out emails and whoever comes, comes. I'm not gonna go hunt everyone down and, and do all that. So they have to be, the, the two rules is they can't have bully behavior and they have to be active members.
And Mindy, I just wondered as far as like a, a process. A parent's child, child comes home and says, "So-and-so is picking on me every day on the bus" or whatever. So what is the appropriate process? And I guess, um, in light of you have these kids groups, but they don't do anything of that process.
No, they don't.
So that kids don't have to be afraid to report bullying for, a kiddo'll find out about it, correct? So what is kind of the process?
So the kids really, the kids group is really more about bystander training and that we want to empower our bystanders, which is our, our students who are not necessarily involved, to say that they can stand up and say, "Stop." And if they don't feel safe about saying, "Stop," they can, you know, call, text, whatever, um, and so we can intervene. We, if a kiddo goes home to the parent and says that they're being picked on every day on the bus and this is happening, the, the first step that the parent needs to do is to call the building administrator and to do an investigation. What's cool about your scenario is, is that the buses have tapes and we can view them. And so oftentimes, that's kind of an open and shut case, and we can see it. So the administrators start that investigation process. Like I said, every building has an investigation team, so they, they might assign it out to somebody, or they might take it on themselves. If the parent disagrees with how the building found, found or did not found the bullying case, they can call our office up in Student Services and say that they disagree. And so basically, then I can go out and do my own investigation, um, and then make my own finding or unfounded case. And then after that, then I usually call the parents and follow up. And there's, occasionally, there's a parent who completely disagrees with me. And that's the nice thing about our office is that Hank Huddleston's also trained, and so is Jamie Dunn. And so if they completely disagree with me, or I'm just overwhelmed with the number of cases, I can give one of them a case. So there has been times where we've had to pass cases off to each other, but usually, we can find somebody who can investigate it. And then if a parent, if we say a case is unfounded, but a parent still feels something's going on, we encourage them to call us immediately, so that we can continue the investigation. Cause sometimes the first time we investigate it is unfounded, because it's a one-time thing. It's not something that's ongoing, and it's, the student says that they're not gonna keep, continue it, whatever. But then we've had a case where we've had to go back and investigate, and then we founded it based on that, the first time we investigated, the girls were just at each other, and it was just conflict. It was completely just girls going back and forth. But the second time we went out, the girl had said, "I'm not doing this anymore." And she had stopped name-calling, she had stopped being mean, she'd stopped doing all of these things. But the other girl was continuing to go after her. And so the, the, there was a shift in, in balance and power, and so then we founded the bullying case. So we always tell parents to start with the building, but then come to us, and if they disagree, we can keep going.
Then what happens if it is a, you know, a founded case? What happens? What, what's the procedure after you say, "Yes, this bullying did take place"?
So every case is unique, and it depends on the age level of the student, the knowledge of what they're doing and all of those things. And so usually, I try to make recommendations and then ask that the administrators follow up with those recommendations. Um, sometimes it's, um, some counseling through the school counselor. Sometimes we refer the, um, victim to, um, be his providers. There's been, I mean, it's kind of a barrage of things. Sometimes it's just a conversation with me, that if this continues, I'm gonna be back and you don't want me to come back. And so sometimes that stops it right there. It just depends on the students, honestly.
So then do we have a follow-up then, like, next school year or six months later, how that student is adapting?
On severe cases, I usually will put something in my calendar to follow up. But we haven't had any, this year, I would say, we've not had any cases this year where I'm like, "Oh, I gotta keep checking in with this kiddo." I haven't had those. Um, but in the past, usually I'll put something on my calendar in the future that says, "Check on student," and then I just do it when it pops up, so. But there isn't necessarily like what level and when, there isn't necessarily a handwritten black and white. And, and I think it's because of what Lyle and so many of you nodded your heads about. Bullying is very gray. The, the law talks about the perception of the victim, which is really tough. So that's what makes us investigate, but that doesn't make us found a case. So the facts are what makes us founded or unfounded, but the, that perception piece is why we have to investigate, so.
Anything further for Mindy? Mindy, you're doing great things, and it was really cool to see that we've got programs in every single one of our buildings. That's pretty amazing. I, I don't think that every district could say that. So thank you for all your efforts, and please take that back to your staff and everybody else.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is information, um, from individuals and delegations. Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to address the board? And if so, please come forward and state your name and address. Hi, we may just sit for a while. I'm sorry.
Well, that's fine. This is very informative. My name is John Sherman. I live at seventeen fifteen Robin Road. And I'm a few days out from where my kids were, uh, involved with school, but got grandkids and stuff and a lot of neighbors. I came down here tonight, uh, we were, a bunch of us old guys got together and we sorta, uh, trying to find some information out, whatnot. And one of the things that, uh, uh, we're concerned about is getting some people in to actually participate. And being our neighbors and, uh, local neighborhood groups and things. And, uh, we came up with an idea, but possible, and was wondering, uh, if the board would consider. I don't know if it's possible or not, and I guess that's why we're asking if they could, uh, these meetings on Monday night hit the same night that the council meetings hit. And the council meetings are once, are four times a month, and, uh, it makes it impossible to do both. We're trying to, uh, like I said, just sorta get the neighborhoods and, you know, the neighbors involved and, uh, and not trying to run anything or whatever. We just like to see what's going on, and we've been very encouraged about what's going on this year in schools. And, uh, and we'd like to follow up on that a little bit, so that's, uh, uh, what I'd like to have you guys consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. And I just wanna ask you for clarification. Are you talking about the city council meetings?
Yes.
Okay, great.
They're on Monday nights. Cedar Falls switched their. Cedar Falls switched theirs. They were, they're every, uh, every other Monday, and the school board was on the same. And so they did switch it, so they could, you know, the people could, that wanna participate could get into it, so.
Well, I appreciate that comment, and we will definitely, um, we, we can talk to the city and we can perhaps work on that. I don't know that there's necessarily a reason why we have to meet Monday night, so I'd definitely be open to hearing about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? All right, then we will move on to our consent agenda, which this evening consists of the following items. Um, the minutes of the March ninth, two thousand and fifteen regular board meeting, personnel appointments and adjustments, bills due and payable, and bills paid between board meetings, um, the appointment of board members, a board member to Planning and Zoning Commission, and the request to the Community Foundation of Northeast Iowa for the Cedar Valley Sportsplex partnership. Are there any items that any board members would like to have removed?
I'd like, uh, item D, the bills due and payable to be removed, cause I'll abstain.
Item D, great.
And item F.
And item F. Okay, so D and F. Anything else?
Item E, I'll abstain from voting also.
Okay, there we go.
I'm gonna second item E though.
There you go, okay. So, so with that being said, we're down to just items B and C left on our consent agenda. So all those in favor of approving the consent agenda with those two items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Let's move on then to, um, uh, page seven, uh, Exhibit D. And the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings.
So moved.
And is there a second? Second? Is there any discussion?
Just before the discussion, before the vote, I'll abstain from voting on this, cause it's an attorney who represents a client who's paid by, um, one of the bills.
Excellent, all right. So with that, um, all those in favor of approving, uh, item D, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. And one abstention. We're gonna get it. We will get it in there, so. Oh, all right, so we voted on the consent agenda with the two items B and C, but I need someone to move and second that post haste. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike. Excellent. And we've already voted on it, so there you go. All right. Um, then item E on page fifteen is the appointment of a board member to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Get to that page here. And the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the appointment of Sue Flynn to the City of Waterloo Planning and Zoning Commission.
Also moved.
Second.
Mike and Andrea, thank you. And any discussion? I just wanna start out by saying, I think Mike's gonna talk a little bit about it, but I'm really glad that Sue, you've stepped up to do this. So Mike, why don't you give us a little background?
Yes, and I've been the, um, the school board has a representative on the Waterloo Planning and Zoning Commission. I believe there are nine members, three of which are, um, representatives of other organizations. The school board, I think, community development, and I'm going blank on the third, but Human Rights Commission. I'm sorry, oh, it's here, yeah.
And they meet on Monday nights too.
Yeah, uh, no, they meet on Tuesday. And actually, Mr. Sherman, I, I don't know, the question on why the school meetings are on Monday nights, I don't know the answer to it. But there's not a school board representative on the, on the city council in Waterloo. Um, I don't know when, like, for example, Evansdale City Council. There is though on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they meet on Tuesdays. And so now they meet earlier, although the meetings oftentimes stretch. So I don't know, I, I don't know why the meetings are necessarily on Monday night, but my sense is there are probably other considerations, like a lot of the things I've found from being on the school boards. There are other considerations that go down. Wednesday is probably out, cause that's usually for church youth groups. Thursday's usually tougher for, um, activities. Fridays and Sundays would be out, Saturdays as well, but I would look into it. I had not heard that before, but I don't know. But, um, it meets, the, one of the Planning and Zoning Commission meets once a month, um, typically. Uh, there's actually a special meeting tomorrow. But I, um, am not running for reelection. My term doesn't end until September, but it happens to be, um, there's a training session that, um, Iowa State Extension Service offers for, basically, it's basically for Planning and Zoning Commission members. And it's being held in Waterloo, um, on the thirtieth. And I've, in five or six years, I've never heard of it happening and then happening here. So, um, that was the impetus for bringing it up now, is just, it would be a good time, um, to allow the new member who would be coming in September, October to get on, um, and go through the training session and then go through the, um, the process there, so, um, that's why it's up now, so. I think Sue and I have been both attend the next meeting, assuming this passes. And then Sue would vote, I'll, I'll still be there to kinda transition, but, um, that's why it's coming up now.
Great. And like I said, Sue, thanks for agreeing to do that. Really appreciate it. And Mike, thank you for your service on this.
I enjoyed it.
It's one more meeting, I know, but.
No, but it's a good, the city, um, staff, planning and zoning staff does a very good job.
Yep. Anybody have anything further? All right, with.
I think it's great, because it keeps a good relationship, a working relationship within the government.
Yeah, and it does, yeah, it's been very helpful.
Well, it gives us a voice at the table too.
Yeah, and it, and there've been a lot of, surprising how many times it does come up with there are questions about schools or, for example, when, like, when Becker was opening and the site selection went for that. That certainly came up. It came up quite a bit when the, um, property, um, we went through the rounds of property. That's the word, uh, uh, or what's it, best deter or something, um, we went through a couple rounds of that, that really helped, so, yeah, it works well.
Great, thanks. Well, all those in favor then, the motion's on the table. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving, um, item E, the board member to the Planning and Zoning Commission, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. And one abstention, pardon me. And then we will move on to item F on page sixteen.
I move the Board of Education authorized submission of the grants to the Community Foundation of Northeast Iowa for thirty thousand, two hundred dollars and approval of any resulting award.
Second.
Either one, great. And I see that Crystal Buzz is here, and I also see that Debbie Lee is here, so perhaps you two can enlighten us a little bit on this grant.
Yeah, and what I'm mostly interested in is what's, what's the long-term vision here?
Absolutely. So the Waterloo Schools through the high school, um, I guess, planning guide. One of the programs that students can choose as a senior is a community wellness, uh, PE class. It's an alternative to physical education. So this class would be ideal for a student who might have a full load, um, so they can get their physical education credit in, if they're taking some advanced placement courses, a variety of different reasons. The main goal with this class is to really help seniors transition into life post-high school and how to continue to have, um, better, healthy choices and how they can utilize their resources within the community. So this, um, idea was brought to actually Dr. Lee and myself by a number of, uh, the PE teachers, specifically Mike Sinram. He has been doing a lot to really enhance the, um, physical wellbeing of all of our students throughout K-12. He's a instructor at West High School. And he said, "Here we have this wonderful facility in Waterloo, um, that would be a great partnership for our students, would offer them a lot more variety of things that some of the other wellness locations have. Um, and this would be something that we'd like to see that we could use." Right now, West has been able to really help students who choose the alternative PE class through some different grant funding that they have specifically at their program. But East and Expo don't necessarily have the opportunity to do that. They do have some students that sign up for the community wellness, but it's not very many. So our thoughts were if we really made a direct plan in working with, um, the Sportsplex, we could offer this to more students and give them a variety of opportunities. So that's kind of how the, the program really started, um, and from there. So the first thing that we would like to do is that we know the cost of the program, um, to run it, um, would be thirty thousand, two hundred. And so that's what we would be looking to the Community Foundation to help us with. In addition, we're really hoping that we do receive that grant. We would also look to apply for a Wellmark grant that doesn't come due until May. Um, there's actually a letter of intent that happens in May, and then we would find out sometime in June if we could continue to go forward, and we'd apply in August, um, for a matching grant. So our goal really at this point, just because we know there's a lot of influx with budgets, is that we would look at something that we'd wanna sustain for two years. One, we wanna see how the program works, um, and then ideally, we hope to continue the program. Is there something else you wanna add?
So, so currently, if a student's taking, uh, a full load, they're not required to take PE, correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
So this is really an add?
It is, but we also have a lot of students taking advantage of this right now. And it may not be a student just with a full load. It may be a student who wants to do their PE in some other way and another arrangement. And, uh, West High has students out now, seniors, out now at the various different sports, um, fitness centers. And it's a challenge always to keep track then of the, the different students at the different locations and, um, trusting the login of there, trusting that everybody's telling the truth when they get that time in, and, and we can monitor that. What we'll do with this, with the Sportsplex, is bring that down to one location and one group of people who are working with us specifically, where the students will log in. We will get the data on that. They will do other, uh, programs with the students. And so it really tightens up the whole piece of that. And we want to honor the Sportsplex and, um, have a partnership with them. We believe in that. Um, we believe that they will, if we start a partnership like that, they will be able to contribute to our fitness program in other ways as well, possibly in the future. So it really is bringing it all together into one location and. So it really is bringing it all together into one location and being able to monitor and work with the students who choose to have their PE this way, and it's only seniors who can do this.
So these sessions, how many and over what time period?
So the program is designed, um, to be a semester long, um, and they go through different things that they'll go over each, um, week, I'm trying to find my, um, sheet. So for example, week one, um, they would have classes that students could attend, they're not required to attend, um, but we would strongly encourage them to attend based on the timing that if they were, um, done with school a little bit earlier, but we would say, here are the times that we're having instruction, and we'd, you know, have to work with students and find out what their schedules would be. But they, the classes we'd hope to offer would be kind of around a two-hour schedule, um, where they could come and go, um, and then the first week would be introduction, and then we'd have to do kind of baseline testing, because that's one thing that they'd have to do that would be a requirement by the, um, standards. To just do baseline testing, introduction of the different equipment, terminology, just wellness in general. Then week two, they would introduce actual classes with a trainer to help them get used to doing, um, classes like yoga where that's not something that we necessarily do at our high schools, but that's more of kind of a lifelong health thing, um, that is a really good benefit. And then a variety of other classes besides just that, then they would also bring in a dietitian, too, to help them. So they would do the combination of not only he- healthy physical behavior, um, but also their eating and being mindful of that. So that's kind of a really good component that they do not get at all anywhere else. And they would have a staff person that would be in charge of checking in on the students to make sure they're coming in and working with them with their logs as they would log their workouts to get used to doing that. So they, each week they would kind of build upon those programs, so then they would move up, um, and try something a little bit more rigorous or something a little bit different. Um, and then, you know, there'd be a midway check-in point and then at the end to see, um, where they were at.
Is this during the school day, or?
Yes.
I was gonna ask, or can they do it after, or either before school or outside the context of the school?
They can utilize the Sportsplex anytime they would want to, but some of the courses, you know, the classes, and this is kind of where, you know, we're not gonna know until we have students sign up. Ideally, some of the, the classes that they would have would be kind of right at the tail end of the school day or possibly within that school timeframe, yeah.
So how is transportation for those students who might not have?
So normally how this pro- this, this program works is students are, they know when they sign up for this class that they have to provide their own transportation. The one thing that we know with the Sportsplex, though, i- it is actually very walkable from most of the high schools. Probably the hardest high school to walk from would be West.
So is it each semester thirty thousand?
No, for, that would be to carry us through a, a fall, spring, and then summer, so three times.
What does that pay for, I mean, what does it pay, staff?
It will help, um, so approximately, we would have each semester, um, we would have seventy-five memberships, so we're assuming seventy-five students each semester. So that's, um, three months of a membership that they would get. So then, you know, they could come in at any time, obviously. They would have specific open gym hours just for those students, so reserving that gym, and then their classes, then with their individual instructors and personal trainers. And then knowing that they'd bring in these students, they'd have to get some additional equipment to help provide them, because if they're gonna have approximately fifty kids or seventy-five kids at a time, they don't necessarily have enough equipment currently for their classes to facilitate that need along with other members. So there'd be some additional equipment that they're thinking they would need, in addition, some of the body compo- composition analyzers that they don't currently have.
So if this is actually a, an education class, is there an attendance requirement?
They, they, and they are required to attend, and that's the one thing that we talked about, there's not really a good way, as the class stands now, to really gauge that attendance, other than the teacher constantly checking in, like, how have you been doing, let's see some of the, their post and pre-assessments that they can do.
Are they graded?
Like a PE pass/fail?
Our PE is pass/fail. Pass/fail, okay, pass/fail, okay.
I guess I, and that's hundred and fifty dollars a student, the way this looks, so if you, if you carried this to extreme, it'd be a one-point-five million dollar PE program. I do believe in, uh, the lifelong health aspects, but I guess the question is, either we do it in-house, or we contract the whole thing and get rid of the in-house PE, one way or the other. I don't, I don't think it works to just have a choice. In other words, if, if we're, if we're gonna do PE inside, then let's do it right. If we're not, then let's subcontract the whole thing to a Sportsplex or, or somebody else and let them come in and, and do the program, whether it's onsite or offsite, I don't really care. But I, I'm, I don't think this mix works very well. I think this is, it may as a pilot, I don't know, but like I say, if, if, either we have the facilities and the capacity and the staff to offer PE as we think it should be, and if, if the Sportsplex model is the way it should be, then okay. But we have to compare doing that in-house or hiring them to do it for us, either in-house, but I don't like the idea of, of paying a hundred and fifty dollars extra out of our budget for kids that simply say, I wanna, I don't want to do it in-house.
Are we miss, is there a niche that we're missing, and, and I'm wondering, A, that's my first question, and then secondly, you're asking, this is to, to apply for a grant, so this is not gonna be initially anyway, not affecting our budget, because I, I agree with Lyle that we do have to look at that. So what happens if, if we don't get the grant?
We will not likely be able to do this without grant, I'm not planning on going to Michael and asking for that kind of money for our PE program. We have had a, this traditional, tr- transitional class in our PE offerings for a number of years. It has been sustained mostly from West High finding little bits and pieces of grants here and there, or kids who go and pay for it themselves in some cases, and I don't have the data on that, I just know that it's well-received. And it's, the niche for this are seniors. This is not appropriate for all of our students, the ability for ninth and tenth graders and a lot of our, uh, juniors to move themselves transportation-wise is not, that's not feasible. And would we want to be able to provide transportation to get seniors there who could do this? Yes, but we don't have that kind of money right now to do that. So as a pilot, we want to see, again, we want to, we have, we have this class happening at multiple sites now, but we want to tighten it, we want to make sure that the classes, as Sportsplex can do that, are not being offered at the other site. So we're getting a cream of the, it's, it's just the best that we could do in terms of programming as a transitional offering for our seniors to move them from having a PE class with a teacher telling them what to do every day to becoming more self-regulated and independent in how they approach their own wellness, and that is the goal of all of our, uh, classes that we have, is to develop students who are self-regulated in their learning and the application of that in life. So there definitely is a niche role for this. Uh, what we want to do is pilot this totally with grant money and see where we go from there, how it works that, that first year. If we can find matching grants to do this, we could, um, expand that just a little bit, but it's certainly not, um, something we would want to do for all of our PE programming, for all of our high school students, that just would not be feasible.
Well, I don't know about that.
Oh, okay, then.
Well, I'm, what's missing from our current PE programs that, that is being offered here?
One of the things that they can offer that we don't offer in our PE programs is the independent, they can go in on this program and do, um, uh, the classes are offered three days a week, they can go in on the other days and actually do their, uh, again, self-regulate their own conditioning and take, uh, do that conditioning, do, um, aerobic exercising, do, do that kind of, all of that kind of, um, activity that our schools are not open in the evenings to be able to do that with. This is, again, this is a transition into adult living, and, um, we certainly have great programs, PE programs in our schools, um, but they are not open on those other hours, and, you know, this gives our students a chance to learn about the Sportsplex and again, to learn about how to choose what they need to do to keep themselves healthy.
Why would that apply to some students and not all students?
It's a choice for the students, what we want to do is offer a continuum in the PE area, and so we have various classes that those students can take. It's not all just PE ninth grade, PE tenth grade, PE eleventh grade, as they get older, we offer a variety of PE classes, and I don't have that list with me right now, it's in our program of studies. So that we have that, that continuum of classes that they can take, like flex and fit or strengthening, and those are different classes that they can take at that, um, junior and senior level as they get older, this is one of those classes. I, I don't see a problem with offering this to students, except what I always worry about is we get this going with our, with grants, it's wonderful, but eventually may there be a point where we don't have a grant anymore, and we can't afford it ourselves in our school budget. And I mean, it's a great opportunity for seniors, and I can see what the point is for it, but I always worry about that aspect.
In order to know whether it's, we can afford it, though, we need to know what our current cost is.
Right.
So maybe we, maybe we need to ascertain that, what's our current cost of offering PE? And again, I'm, I'm, I don't see any distinction between one student or the next student, if it's good for one student, it's good for all students. So we need to view it as being comprehensive, one way or the other, but if we're gonna do that, then we need to compare what's, what's our current cost, whether it's seniors or juniors and seniors, or sophomores and juniors and seniors, what's our current cost? And then what's the cost of just converting to this program?
Right.
And I just have an additional concern, because, um, this, this lifelong part, um, is what I learned in college and would have had the opportunity as a high school student, I know that it's an option, but it would not have been an option for me. And so other students that are like me that are currently in our high schools, it wouldn't be an option, so it doesn't become an option for all, it's an option for some. And I, and I think that this is so crucial, especially in families where this is absolutely never taken into consideration. And it changed my entire family from the stuff that I learned in college, I was able to share that with them.
Why isn't it an option for all students?
Well.
Because of the transportation?
Because of, of, of transportation or.
But you're talking wellness, you can walk there.
So if there's a blizzard outside, and you're gonna walk there where it's pouring down raining, you're gonna walk there just because I have to go to class?
Gotta go to work. I mean, i- it's adapting kids to grown-up, so if you gotta get somewhere and you gotta go to a class, you gotta be at work, how do you get there? I mean, I, I'm just playing the side of, we can always have excuses that we, it's not equitable for everybody, but why isn't it, I guess, that's what I'm asking.
Some people don't always have that support system to get their child somewhere, or them themselves, if you're a senior, and you're wondering, how am I gonna get there, because it is six miles away?
From a, from a facility standpoint, what, what is unique about this program, wh- why couldn't it be offered at the schools?
Are you asking if, uh, personnel could come into the schools, or if our current teachers would be doing that?
The same, the same program, just shift the locations.
Sure, I, I, can I jump in a little bit?
Absolutely.
I would just say a couple things, first of all, I think, I think your question about current cost is absolutely something that we could, we could get back with you on, so I think that one I, I definitely would add. I guess just my thinking on this is, first of all, in the realm of, you know, you look up at our, um, our, our, well, look in the front, you know, we talk about limitless options, or, you know, global thinking, limitless options, and so if we're really truly talking about options, I think it's really, if you think of it as another menu, uh, another menu item, then I think it causes us to think a little bit differently from, then everybody should do it, you know, and it's, it's possible, you just have to, you know, some kids would, would love, I can think that some kids would really love this type of an option, and some kids will say, that's not for me. So we, we could look at, at exploring that for all or for none, but, you know, the, so the question is, do you not allow it for any, you know, that, that's just a question to think about, and I'm not sure I have the exact answer for that. And then, um, I would, you know, I think we have some kids who don't take PE because they can't fit it in, but this would probably trip their trigger. And so if we're really thinking about post-high school, and we really want them to be healthy and make healthy choices, I think it might be an option to, to springboard them into transitions. Um, and then I just wanted to, this is just my thinking, as far as, I think your question is a really good one, Lyle, when you said, what could they, what can they offer that's different from what the kids get at high school? Well, if you think about kids who would go to, walk into the Sportsplex and see all of the equipment, all of the environment, um, the, the flexibility of the scheduling, instead of going third hour to PE, going three times a week on a, you know, or, or on a Saturday night or whatever, I think that offers some different. I think just the environment itself and the equipment and the options that they have there would be certainly different. And then, you know, that opportunity to be self-regulated, which is not really something that we're gonna do at school, we're not gonna have everybody just kind of go in and come in when they want on a PE course to come in and, you know, could we do something on weekends, certainly? You know, we can, we can, we could certainly look in that, but I just wanted to reply to my own thinking about how that looks different at the Sportsplex or any, or the Y or wherever.
The fact that it's offered, though, during the school day, kinda, you know, the whole argument that you're taking a full load. If you, if you have time to go during the school day to the Sportscomplex, you have time to do it at school.
Is it always during, because it says it's independent, and I didn't believe that it was actually during the school day, it could be the last period where they're leaving, um, on early release or something like that.
Right, yep.
But it was, it's, i- it, the independent study class really is not a scheduled into your third hour or your fourth hour, it might be the first hour of the day where you don't typically come, because you have early release, if you've earned early release, but I would, I would have a guess, I mean, we won't know until we try, but my guess is that kids who have never signed up for PE or, you know, or didn't take it because they had the academic exemption, might do an independent study.
Of this three weeks, how much of it is going to be class time?
So, it's, it's a fourteen-week program, so it's a whole semester. It's, the students don't have to take one of the classes, the classes will be an option for them, we do want them to work with a personal trainer and set up a time that they would have that monitoring, that's kind of the big key, because it's so easy to go into a gym, and even if you are, you work out regularly and you think you know how to use equipment, you don't really know what you're doing until someone sits and helps you figure out how to manage that.
So we have five or six hundred seniors, how do you pick seventy-five?
They sign up.
Well, what if you get more than seventy-five sign up, there, then there's, is it a lottery, how does, how many are you getting participating in this at this point?
It's, it's not very many at this point.
But if it gets to this point, then you might get overwhelmed, and what, what happens then?
Then, um, we have that happen in some of our other classes, I mean, nurse's assistant is the same way, it's a very limited number. This is not as limited as that, and we would have to figure out how to deal with that at that time, I think it's a very good point, and I don't see that happening this first go-around, I think it might build and happen later on, but we will need to be looking at that. We can only support what we have money to support, we are.
There are families that pay for their kids to go to the center anyway, would they be able to use that as part of this and then pay, pay their own way then?
That's something, it's a possibility, and there are still some things.
For those who can afford it, maybe they pay their own way, and for those who can't afford it, then maybe this would be an option for them.
So the students, there are some students now in, who are going out to the other fitness centers who do pay for some of their own, and so we know that that happens. So that, that is a possibility. I think, and why we want to do a pilot with this, is to figure this out as we move forward, we're not starting it for another year until January of two thousand and sixteen. So as these questions come up, we're gonna nail these down a lot clear, but we have to go after the money to be able to support it.
Spring of sixteen, summer of sixteen, and then fall of sixteen-seventeen?
Yes. And I appreciate the question about, um, sustainable funding. It is not unrealistic for us to know that we've got to get that funding, but it is definitely realistic, unrealistic for us to know it's gonna probably not come out of our, uh, general funds, we, we just can't do that. That's soft money for us right now in terms of grants, we'll do the best that we can with that. This won't be the first time that we've had money from a grant that has supported programming. So in part of that time, we will continue to have the conversations and how do we make this happen on a long-term basis? Is there somebody out there who's willing to fund it, maybe at a lesser level, can we get recurring grants, and do we find our way, uh, looking at cost analysis to, uh, putting some money into it from the general fund, is it worth it? So these are questions that we have to go after and look at, but we need to get this funding, go after this funding now to be able to try this out as a pilot.
The Sportsplex has six-month or one-year memberships, I think? The sportsplex has six-month or one-year memberships, I think, is that how that, or you can pay by the day, I believe. They have three months, so it would, this would pay for that one three-month session then? Through the sportsplex, for that one?
It would pay for that fourteen, they're going on fourteen-week semester, so it would pay for that.
But it would basically give them a membership for those fourteen weeks?
Absolutely. So they can go in as often as they want to during that time and whatever time the place is open.
How many students do not take PE today?
Who don't take PE? I don't have that answer, but I can get it for you.
Seniors specifically, probably is what you'd wanna.
Yeah, and I should just say, I, I look at this.
No, all of them, cause, I mean, you don't have to take PE, I don't think.
Yeah, yeah, they're required to take PE until they're exempt, unless they're exempted out.
Probably a good idea for our students to know that wellness is important in this. And I looked at this, when I saw it in the packet, I didn't know this was coming, I thought it was a great thing. And I know Mr. Sinram has worked very hard to try to make sure kids are getting as much instruction and developing as good of habits as possible. So I'm guessing he was probably instrumental in getting this going. I haven't had anything to do with getting this application out, but I saw it and I thought, this is great. Cause it's, this is basically the pilot program of it. We don't know if it will work or be sustainable, or if it's worthwhile, but let's try and provide other options. I think the part with the sportsplex is, the sportsplex is there and it's a separate entity. It wasn't designed to take over, certainly wasn't designed to take over physical education for the school district. It was more designed for the broader community. But the facility's there and it's been built, and it seems like this is a good way to help utilize it. I'm assuming it's at cost or probably below cost a little bit from the sportsplex perspective. As well, but it, it provides an alternative for students hearing about yoga being taught. I don't think the water the school should hire yoga instructors, but the sportsplex probably should. They have those there and an option for that. And if the yoga class has an extra three or four spots in it, great. If our, our, our students can get in there and do that, I think that's fantastic, and I think it's worthwhile to take the chance. If students can't get there for transportation reasons, I would like to think at our schools, the staff members that I know usually will, not usually, all will work very, very hard to figure that out and sort that out. But I wouldn't wanna take that, I wouldn't wanna take the right away from those students who could go there. And this may be their only opportunity to do that. I don't wanna harm them just because there may be another student who can't get there.
I definitely don't wanna get hurt as that, cause I was always gonna vote for this. I think it's an excellent opportunity, I just wanted that to be a consideration.
Gotcha, but I, I don't think the, the fact that, the controversy around this, I don't think has to do with this program. I thought it was a great kind of synergy and utilizing a facility that's there for the community. And if it doesn't work, if we don't get the grant, this probably is not gonna go ahead. If we get the grant and it doesn't work there, this is probably not gonna go ahead.
If we would get the grant and the money became available, would it be for more than three semesters if there was still money left over? Or is it, is it, is it done after three semesters?
So ideally, what I'd like to do, assuming when we get the grant from the community foundation, we will also know that we'll apply for a matching grant from Walmart, which should sustain us for two years. So we could look at six semesters, so we could have more of a baseline to see.
That's assuming that you fill all seventy-five for all three semesters.
Right, and if there are some left, we certainly would, I would say, we would continue it on, absolutely.
Able allocated to be extended out over a longer period of time?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So it could last for four or five years potentially?
And it could not work, but it also could work and help kids and develop good habits. And, and that's why I support it, I'm gonna vote for it, because it, I look at this thinking, this might be a great thing.
With one caveat, I think that we should try and look at what they're providing the students and, and what's doing a lot of good, especially in the health and healthy attitudes and healthy eating and things that the sportsplex might, might give for information and try to incorporate that into our normal PE classes too. Because I agree, you know, with Lyle, that we want to be able to afford and be able to provide this information to all our students and not just the seniors.
But I think, what, like with Mike, when I saw this, I saw it as, how many classes do we have in the district that we've started a program, it had high enrollment and then it dropped off? Or we ceased to have that class? So this is an opportunity to start the class, to see if it's successful. We can track the kids that are in the program. And it also brings, when you're talking about an equity aspect of it, there's some kids that have never ever stepped foot in the sportsplex that this is gonna provide them an opportunity to step a foot in the sportsplex. And besides the community part of it, they're gonna have to learn to go to a, a community building and act like an adult when they're lifting weights, not like they do in the gym at West High School, or East High School or Expo, and screw around. They've gotta act like an adult, so there's some accountability too. So I think that the ownership the kid will have in going to an outside facility is, is only going to reap them benefits to learn how to act also. You know, so I, I don't see a negative, I accept obviously the funding. But if we can continue to get grants, and if we can't, then we can't have the program, just like the DARE program. We continued to get grants to have the DARE program, but then we didn't, so we didn't have it.
But we can maybe, as part of this grant and pilot, if you will, I think we need to think in terms of how we do sustain it. And Mike, I'm all for a long-term health, and I think it's a good program. And I understand your argument that, well, it's another option, but we need to balance those. And I just don't want a class of, a normal class of thirty students that we provide instructor for only have fifteen because we're paying a hundred and fifty dollars a student for the other fifteen to be somewhere else. So maybe, maybe there's a combination where these, the class piece of it could be onsite. And then the go on your own time.
Workout wellness part.
Workout could be the other time, that, that would offer it to more students, I think. Cause students might not be able to go there at a specific time for these classes, but they might be able to find, probably will be able to find a way sometime. And then, like I say, just compare, compare the, the cost so that we, we staff internally then, knowing that we're not, we're not paying for that, those instructors for the students that aren't, aren't gonna go there. So I think there's a way there, but I think we need to be a little bit creative during this time to try to make it work.
Please.
Is that what a pilot is, although if something doesn't work?
Well, I don't see the word pilot, but that's why I say, I was, I'm concerned about the long-term vision here, not the.
Well, let's remember that we have students in this class already. They are scheduled in, they have been for a number of years' semesters. And they are going out to other fitness centers and doing this already. So all this does is allow us to bring it together, to have better monitoring, better implementation, to keep track of those students, ensuring that the PE class they're getting is up to the standards that we expect. So this is a way of kind of bundling it together to provide a higher level of design quality. So we have students already in this.
Well, going forward, Debbie, if you wouldn't mind, I do think a little research, some of the things we asked for tonight, the current cost of our programs, maybe even that list, and I know we all have the course catalogs, but what are the offerings for our juniors and seniors that we, that are beyond just regular PE? And then also, I think it would be nice to know how many students take the academic exemption and, and don't take any PE period. And I know that's not something that can be found out immediately, but I think.
Are the athletic exemptions too?
Right.
Yeah, there are multiple, there are multiple exemptions, and we can run those down and see what we've got that's on file.
Cause I know we've got, we're not talking till January twenty sixteen, so we have a little time for all of us to get up to speed on that stuff too. If, if you would put that in a tickler file to get back to us, that would be great.
And this item is just to be able to apply for the grant at this point?
Yes, yeah.
And I think you probably would want the numbers of who currently is in this particular class that this would apply to. I think you would wanna see those numbers too.
At all three schools.
Yes.
And if, if possible, how active they really are, I mean, are they just signing up for the course?
There is monitoring that goes on, and we can look at the monitoring data too.
But like you said, this is gonna help that monitoring piece. Now, the other thing I would wonder is, you talk about the BMI, and they are, are they, are they checked before? And then, and then their BMI is checked after the fourteen weeks? Do we do that in the other gym classes?
Yes, there are different programs that we have, we have heart monitors, we check that, we do a lot of that already in our, in our classes. And I think part of what.
Well, the reason, what I'm getting at is to maybe gauge how much this helps versus our normal health class. And is it doing more, is it doing less? Is, and then also, there's more than just the health piece, there's the knowledge piece that goes along with that, so. But you, again, you should be able to get that knowledge, no matter what gym class you go to, or athletics.
And I think an interesting aspect of this could be, potentially, since it is piloting in the beginning, maybe track those seniors that first take it, six months post-graduation, are they still involved in health classes? Are they still living a healthy lifestyle, you know, just, just to track them? You know, and a year later, are they, you know, you could easily track that.
They'll love the Waterloo Community Schools for coming back out of it six months.
So as part of the program, you have to have a chip put in.
Right.
If you would have that data to apply for additional money, that it's promoting a healthy lifestyle, so.
All right, well, I think that we've discussed this, if y'all are ready. Yes, yes, which is good, this is important stuff. So unless anybody has anything further, Debbie, thank you, and Crystal, thank you for all the information. And I do look forward, I know we'll be interfacing again about this, so.
Thank you.
So we are just tonight voting on asking the community foundation for this grant money. So it is a request to the community foundation of Northeast Iowa for the Cedar Valley Sportsplex partnership. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. So the next item on our agenda, which is sure to create some conversation, is item G on page eighteen. And while Michael Coughlin comes to the microphone, I'm going to get the motion on the table that the Board of Education approve the budget expenditure estimate and the tax levy rate for publication, and set the public hearing for the twenty fifteen sixteen certified budget at six PM on April thirteenth, two thousand fifteen. Thanks, Mike, and a second, Andrea. Great. Mr. Coughlin, you have the floor.
See if we can get, get this going. And you're looking at it on your screens, right, as well? I want to review the, the portions of the budget that are now required to be decided, to be published in the paper, to then be reviewed and finally approved on the board meeting on April thirteenth, to be delivered to the county auditor by April fifteenth, and that's our normal routine. Spring colds are wonderful. Really, the part of the budget that is under consideration tonight are two things. This is not how we spend the money. This is going over the formula that determines the amount of revenue through the budget that we are able to generate by formula, what that tax rate then turns out to be, and based on the revenues that we have, what is the maximum expenditures that can be approved by the board that we live within? So we approve the tax rate and we approve the maximum spending for all the different funds. The tax rate will then be published, reviewed again in, in April, as I said, and the board has the opportunity to reduce that amount if they so choose, but you cannot raise it. Now, we are in an interesting situation, as you well know, that the state has not determined what our old allowable growth or now supplemental state aid, SSA, is. Right now, the House is stuck on one point two five percent, and the Senate is stuck on four percent. And they don't seem to be getting anywhere on somewhere in between. So until that is determined, we won't know exact numbers. Now, it is interesting, because of property tax reform and, I guess that's all part of it, where the state does two things now. Whatever we get in new money, basically the state covers it. They don't pass it on to the taxpayers. And also part of the property tax reform is commercial and industrial. Where they were always at, there was no rollback, they always paid a hundred percent of their assessed valuation. Where in contrast, residential was about fifty-five percent, and commercial industrial paid a hundred percent. Well, last year they paid ninety-five percent, and the state kicked in the other five percent. We didn't lose that. This year, this budget for next year goes to ninety percent, and then it stays there. So what I'm trying to get at with that is regardless of whether we have one point two five percent, whether it's two percent, two and a half, three, or four, it will not affect the tax rate to the school district, to the school district's constituents, cause all of the increases are covered by the state. There's a little bit of wiggle room in there. Even if we went to four percent, it would only change the tax rate with our current numbers less than a dime. There's just some different calculations in there that affect our property value per student and some of those adjustments that they do. But overall, regardless of how much money the legislature approves, our tax rate is not going to change. Because the state picks up the increase of property tax.
So the allowable and the actual money are being, are one in the same in terms of the two and a half or four percent?
Ask that again.
Is it, will, whatever they, whatever the allowable growth or student supplemental, whatever it is, will that be fully funded?
Yes. Let, let me get one more part in there that, that gives a little broader picture. It does not change our tax rate, but it does allow us a larger budget. If we get a four percent increase, of course, that's a lot more money that we have as an authorized budget than at one point two five percent. We have the authority to spend more money based on the formula, cause it's based on four percent rather than one point two five. But the tax rate itself, the money that we collect from the taxpayers will not change, except minutely under any of those percentages, because the state is picking up whether they do one point two five percent, whether to do four percent, the state is picking up that increase in their budget. Now, that's part of their argument of saying, our budget is used up. Because not only are we giving you one point two five percent, we're also covering the ten percent for commercial industrial, and we are covering the tax portion that used to go to your taxpayers for even the one point two five percent.
When, when they, when they make up the difference then, that's just from their tax, their, their taxes they're getting from, from their revenue.
Their rev, their budget, yes.
Okay, and their revenue comes from the taxpayers, correct?
Among other things.
Yeah, okay.
There's state income tax, there's, there's a whole gam-
All, all kinds of taxes, okay.
Whole gamut of revenue that comes into a state. Whole gamut of revenue that comes into a state.
But it's just, it's just not property taxes, but it is coming from their general revenue, okay.
Correct. Okay, so that gives you a little bit of a broader picture of what we're looking at here, that, yes, we don't know what we're going to get in SSA, one point two five or four percent. If we get a higher number, we can, we will have a larger budget to spend. But regardless of the percentage that we get, our tax askings will stay relatively the same. Okay, does that make sense? Okay, let's just hit some of this, and I, I wanted to kind of clear that before we got into this and it got more confusing. On page one, I'm just giving you some history of, of, of the districts, you can kind of see where we've been. The enrollment over the last five years have steadily increased. Page two, we get into the authorized balance. Whether it's backed by cash or not, has not always been there, but this is the authority for spending that we get through the budget.
So are these, are these slides-
Will you advance that one, one more time, Michael?
I guess I have to keep up with this, don't I?
There we go.
There we go. Okay. Apologize for that. I'm looking at paper rather than my own screen, so. So we have, these are the components of the budget. The enrollment, we've seen an increase in that. The unspent balance, which is the authorized budget by authority, by formula, of what we can spend, and what we have left over, and what we carry forward, has dipped a little bit in two thirteen, uh, is climbing again under the current budget. And then moving forward into the solvency ratio, you see the same trend. Now, this is, the solvency ratio really is a better picture of cash. What is your cash, um, health of the district? Now, let me just explain a little bit of thirteen. This was kind of a collision of three things all happening at once. Special ed overspent one year, and we've corrected that. We also started the pre-K voluntary, pre-K program, expanded that, and had to wait a year for the money to come in. So we spent money that we didn't get, but it made it up in the next year. So that hit, and we also had the end of ed jobs. And we had hired several coaches under that, and we, and when that money ended, a federal program, we did not end those positions, because we were confident, I was actually guaranteed, that we would get the ed reform money on first, first try. Well, even when that happened, it came a year later than what we expected. The legislature put it off, so we had kind of three things hit at once, that we were overspending our money, with special ed, voluntary pre-K, and ed jobs. Well, that is making itself up, and we're recovering from that. So that's why you see the dip, and now the increase of better health. So that's the, that's the story behind what happened with two thousand thirteen.
But weren't we projecting for this year to hold our own at best? I thought our projection was-
And that's what this is showing, we're actually increasing.
Which wasn't expected.
This year, yes, we got four percent money this year, in two thousand fifteen.
Okay, maybe I remember wrong. I thought, I thought even with the four percent, we were going to be luckily to improve our unspent, unspent balance, our, our cash.
Currently, we are expect, with the trends of, of expenditures that we're showing right now, we are expecting to improve in all of these.
I think it's the new superintendent.
So as we go into the budget process, we're really looking at the general fund, management fund, and PEPAL. These are the ones that are, that are affected by, by, uh, property tax. We also have capital projects, the save fund, which is one cent penny. Fund forty is just the payment ba, is the fund we use to pay back debt. It comes in through thirty-three, we pay it out through forty. Uh, we also have the student activity account, and the lunch account, they do show up on these forms, but they are not subject to property tax. So it's really the general fund, management fund, and PEPAL. The components of the budget, we have a combined district cost. That's basically enrollment times state cost per pupil. Then you have the instructional support levy, you have the state voluntary pre-K, miscellaneous income, and prior year's unspent balance. It's the balance you didn't spend, the authority that you get to carry forward. That gives us our total budget spending authority. Of that, it's made up of not just enrollment times cost per pupil. It also has supplementary waiting in it, special ed waiting, teacher salary supplement, TSS money, that the legislature four years in a row added money to the teacher's salary to bring them up, on the national scale. The teacher leadership, um, compensation, that's the ed reform that we started this year. It is now part of the formula, it goes on forever. It's subject to the SSA. So whatever we got for this year, if our enroll, if our SSA goes up one point two five, that money also goes up one point two five. The AEA costs in there are in that, um, in the combined district cost, and at-risk, uh, that we approve every year, that the majority of is expo and several other at-risk programs.
So is the teacher's supplement, is that a per-pupil basis?
It is a per-pupil. So when we get increase in enrollment and the increase of percentage, yeah, we get benefit both ways. With the spending, with the budget spending authority, you also add voluntary pre-K, and this is, um, I mean, the, the funding started back in oh seven, oh eight. Uh, we've been doing it, uh, on a, on a bigger scale just the last couple of years, and it's the actual enrollment of the kids that come in, and we only get to count fifty percent of their actual count times the state cost per pupil. But projected for next year, even with, uh, one point two five, it's at one point six million dollars. In addition to that, also is the instructional support program, and we've talked about that a little bit extensively at late, because we just re-approved the five-year plan. It is ten percent of the regular program district cost, which normally is around seventy million dollars, sixty-eight to seventy million dollars. We get to levy ten percent of that to apply to instructional support levy. Uh, in the beginning, the state covered about twenty-five percent of it. And in two thousand eleven, after several years, they stopped paying their share. We only get to the benefit of about sixty-seven percent of that. So we'll look on the forums later, that, uh, for the current year, it would be about seven point one million, and we get to levy for about five million. Uh, it's a five-year re-enactment by the board, and the current program that we are in expires with this budget in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, totally property tax. The program that we will be talking about next year at this time can include income surtax, but we won't get into that until a year from now. Um, and then that program will go through two thousand twenty-one. Uh, along with that, also is then miscellaneous income, and we get many sources from federal, state, and local. State grants, federal grants, the one that, uh, you were considering tonight with, uh, with the PE is, would be a, a local grant. We also get, uh, open enrollment money and tuition money through special education, which is a pretty big number. Federal grants, uh, you're looking at Title I. So there's some pretty big money in the miscellaneous income, about thirteen and a half million dollars. So, to give you some numbers of what I just, uh, looked at, and as you look at last year's budget, or the current year budget of fourteen fifteen that we're in, and the projected budget at the one point two five percent supplementary, supplemental state aid, the combined district cost would go from sixty-nine point nine million to seventy-one point seven. Supplementary waiting would go from one point four to one point five. Special ed waiting, uh, is seeing a decrease in the number of students in special ed. And it's always a challenge to do with less money, but it's always successful to have less kids in special ed. So that's a, a challenge that we are addressing currently. So it goes from fifteen one to fourteen four million. Uh, the teacher salary supplement, PD, early intervention, and also includes TLC, which I didn't put in there, uh, goes from ten seven to eleven. The AEA district cost goes from five point one million to five point six. Uh, SBRC allowable growth, those are the ones that we have approved through increased enrollment and ELL program. Uh, this is not cash reserve. This is not the part that comes under SBRC, where we just want to add a little bit more money to our cash flow. Um, this is purely money that, this money has already been spent. It was approved by the board, and now we are backing it up with tax askings. So that went from two point seven to two point four. And then the dropout program, which is at-risk from three point three to three point two. Um, that went down a little bit because they have changed the rules in midstream, that if you have any money to carry over, you have to deduct that from next year's asking. So we really, by board action, by the formula, could have, and you approved, to ask for three point five something million dollars. Well, we carried over three hundred thousand, with every intention to use it, but because we carried it over, we can't add it to the next year, we have to subtract it. So that's why that went down a little bit. But overall, the to, compo, total combined district cost went from a hundred and eight million six to a hundred and ten million. So you carry that forward to those other portions that I had earlier discussed. So in fifteen sixteen, it's a hundred and ten million. The prior year unspent balance, right now, we are projecting that at around twelve point five million. It was ten point five million in, at the end of fourteen. So we are expecting an increase in the authority balance. The instructional support levy gets added to that at four point eight. Preschool state aid that I had discussed before, one point six million, and miscellaneous income at thirteen point five million. So our total authority that we have to work with in the general fund is a hundred and forty-two million five.
How accurate is the estimating of miscellaneous income, because we don't know the grants yet we're going to get, do we?
There's a couple of different, we look at trends, we look at things that have continued year after year after year. If things stay relatively the same, that number should be pretty close. And I usually am a little conservative on that, to say, "I don't want to overstate that, to make the revenue too high, and then we spend too much against that, uh, and, and get caught." So, that's kind of the practice. So the other side of this is cash balance. We've taught, all we've talked about to this point is authority. And if you think back into the wonderful years of two thousand nine through eleven, we had cuts and crashes and all of those things, uh, kind of highlighted by the year that we got four percent allowable growth. Uh, and then they came halfway through the year and said, "By the way, we're cutting that by ten percent." And then in eleven, again, there was another adjustment. So we actually saw authority come in with almost eleven million less of cash. We got the authority, which was very important, because we never could have built that back up. But once they gave us the authority and cut the cash, that's how, that's what you're hearing right now, of some of the people saying to the, to the, to the House, saying, "Well, even if you can't fund it, even if you're wondering if you can or you can't, give us the authority. Because this is the opportunity that you can work back and cash reserve that cash back into the system to cover a shortage in authority." But the history that we've been working at since then, and we're now in the fifteen sixteen budget, and we still haven't recovered fully from this, because you certainly can't levy ten million dollars in cash reserve back in a year, or two, or a couple, this is what we've done. Eight years, with eight hundred and sixteen thousand this year for next year's budget, we would fully realize that cut coming back to us of that cash that was taken away. And that, and this has been very deliberate of saying, "There's years that we can afford to do it with the tax rate, other things are going on, and we're just going to carefully work our way back." Because if you remember on the first slide where there was an issue, the second slide, that talked about, I'm gonna go to the fourth slide, where you saw the, the trend of the lines comparing cash, unspent balance, and fund balance. Our fund balance did not come up to our authority, our UAB. That means you don't have enough cash to back up your authority. Because we got cut, got cut ten million dollars at one point, and we're making our way back. So as I'm projecting at the end of fifteen, and if I went into sixteen, I would say those two numbers are going to meet. We're going to finally have enough cash to fully fund, be behind our unspent balance. And that's really one of the measurements that we've been talking about, financial health of the district. We've been talking about that a little bit in finance committee, of saying, "How are we really presented?" That's one of the things that outside sources look at. Well, it's nice you have authority, but is there cash behind it? And we're finally getting back to the point where those numbers should meet.
We had to actually take some loans out a few years ago, is that what this was revolving around, is because we were under?
No, the loans, okay, there's two loans. One of them was just some, some cash flow loans. And that was because we were helping out the sales tax fund by not borrowing until we really needed to. So we had enough money in the general fund to cover ourselves, but because we had lent some money within the system to the one cent sales tax, we needed to cover ourselves with, they were very short. They were like two weeks, that we needed some cash flow help. That was for that. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it, this, I think the second was, um, just through the, well, actually, you know better than I do. It was basically for state money, uh, uh, for property tax payments and then state payments, correct?
The time, the funding came in versus to build the-
Right, part of it was just the timing of when money comes in. Every year, we don't get the basic money of our budget starting until October and November. And where the shortfalls always came were in September, until state aid came in, until our big, first big property tax, um, revenue came in. So it was really just a timing issue. So overall, um, if you looked at the chart that I give you every time with the financial, um, cash flow, general fund is, is well above zero in healthy balance, except for one time in the year. And that's right at our first payroll in September, because we've got to start the new contracts, pay off all the summer contracts, but we don't get a big influx of revenue until October, when the first property tax comes in, and then we're fine the rest of the year.
Have we already approved the fifteen sixteen cash reserve levy?
No. That's tonight.
Okay.
But this, this is showing what that would have to be to make up the whole ten million eight ninety that we're shorted back. But this, this is showing what that would have to be to make up the whole ten million eight ninety that were shorted back in those two years. Okay, another history is our property tax rate. Over the last seven years, starting at sixteen sixty six and going down until the fourteen budget to fifteen seventy three. And then last year, because property valuation declined rather than increasing as it normally does, we went up to fifteen ninety eight.
Is that the old superintendent?
The taxable valuation, and this is showing what I just said. That in, in ten, eleven, ten, eleven and twelve, excuse me, um, it went up at least two point seven percent. And then in eleven, it went up six point nine. So in those years, we could see a decrease in, uh, tax levy because valuation had gone up. Well, in thirteen, it went down three point one two percent. So our askings went up and our valuation went down, the tax rate goes up.
Now, is this the valuation before the rollback?
This This includes the rollback.
Okay.
Now, when somebody looks at their bill and they've got a hundred thousand dollar house, that's not in this number. The fifty five thousand that is app- applicable to the tax rate is this number. So the rollback is already built into this.
So the ten percent reduction in commercial industrial would explain the decrease, part of the decrease?
Yes. But it's not that big a number. So that's why I put this on here, so you could see what percentage of the whole valuation were all the different parts. So when you look at commercial, commercial is twenty six percent. Industrial, so thirty percent is the two, commercial and industrial. But this is just a comparison to last year, how much it had changed. Our residential went up two point eight six percent. And it's sixty one percent of the total valuation. And just for certain people in this audience, yes, that includes, a residential includes an agricultural property where your house sits. So if you live out of town, your house is valued in residential property. Agricultural is the land.
So the, the, the two point eight six percent though is not the result of changing valuation? This would actually be more houses?
Could be either. Could be an increase in assessed valuation, could be in additional properties.
In assessed, but not the rollback? There was no change in residential rollback, or was there?
Next slide. Okay? Residential, what you were just asking about, went from fifty four point four to fifty five point seven for this year. Okay? Agriculture went up a little bit, and there you see industrial and commercial going from a hundred to ninety five to ninety. Okay?
Okay.
So, oh, and I went right past it. In light of all of this, financial, finance committee discussing this, the history of cash reserves, the proposed property tax levy for the fif- for the fifteen sixteen budget is fifteen dollars and sixty two cents, dropping thirty five cents from last year. That is allowed by a couple of things. We are reducing our cash reserve, we are reducing management fund. Because we built up some money there, we will not have an early retirement plan to pay out of there next year. So we don't have to levy quite as much in management fund as we have in years past. I also gave you another handout that on the front of it is a breakdown of our tax rate. So looking at line one, kinda right out, right in the middle of the page, twenty seven million one forty three. That is the property tax that comes from the formula based on our enrollment and all of those other things that I talked about. Even, and that's based on the one point two five, even if that went to four percent or six percent, that number would stay basically the same, because the state is picking up all of the increases in their budget. Line three is the SBRC backfilling of authority, where you have approved the ELL budget, um, increased enrollment. That came to two point six five million. And that part is money we've already spending in this year's budget and we are now backfilling it. The cash reserve levy for this proposal is one million three seventy five. And you can go back and look on that chart and see how much we've done in past years.
So this fifteen point six two rate more than offsets the valuation going from fifty three to fifty four percent on a house. Is that correct? So even though the valuation went up, the total tax will actually go down a little bit?
We'll get to that in a second.
I'm sorry.
Okay?
And this, and this, this
Great questions, just, it's easier to show you than discuss it.
The sheet that you have in front of you, or the, the slide that we have in front of us is probably, I think, the finance committee is Sue and Shanley and me. And we spent, obviously, the most time talking about this. I mean, we're very conscious of the tax rate, um, the property tax rate, and also the amount of tax dollars we're getting in. And so it's, it's always a balance between, between trying to fund the programs we've got. And we have more, um, need, I guess, than we always have resources. It's always been that way and I'm sure always will be, um, versus trying to lower the tax rate as much as possible as well. So what we talked about was really, I mean, it, we didn't use the word balance, but that's kinda what we were getting at, was looking at those other things like the, what we had in some of our earlier slides with solvency ratio. We talked about our bond rating as a district too, and how that's affected this, you know, if we cut the tax rate, i- i- it dramatically may affect those other things, those other ratios, um, and potentially the bond rating. So we wanted to be conscious of that as well. One thing I think we are all very grateful for that we've had this year though is increasing enrollment. And I think that helps out, um, a tremendous amount. So we've been very fortunate, it was in one of the slides earlier, I think the second, second one we had. But just the, the enrollment gives, that you saw the increase, I think it's a hundred and forty eight students or, actually, you need to add that up again. But, um, because of that, it gave us a little more breathing room, um, I think, and so we're very grateful for that as well. But it will, you know, we were conscious of trying to lower the tax rate judiciously.
And keep our solvency ratio in line, so that we are managing, we're, we're back to that almost eleven million that we lost.
No, this looks good so far, so unless Michael has some surprise here coming.
Okay, so, so just to point out what Mr. Young is talking about. It is a reduction in the tax rate of thirty five cents. And it's also a million two in dollars that we would be asking less than we did a year ago. So we're going down significantly in both areas. But it does bring us back down into the level that we were trending before. If you looked at those years that we started at sixteen sixty six and went down every year, we got down to fifteen seventy three and then had to pop back up. So this fifteen sixty two is more in trend of, uh, a result of that trend. Okay, so now, uh, getting to the issue of the rollback. Um, residential last year was fifty four four, now it's fifty five seven. Commercial industrial ninety five ninety, agricultural forty three three to forty four seven. So it's naturally, even though the rate goes down, the rollback isn't as good, so it's going to bump it up a little bit. So here's the comparisons. In fourteen fifteen, uh, based on last year's rollback, uh, residential of a one hundred thousand dollar property, they would pay fifty four point four percent or eight hundred and sixty eight dollars. Ninety five percent of commercial of fifteen seventeen and agricultural of six ninety three. New numbers with a little higher, ro- little higher, higher rollback with a little less tax rate. It goes from eight sixty eight to eight seventy. It's almost a match, but not quite. Commercial and industrial is going to see a nice change from fifteen seventeen to fourteen oh five because of going from ninety five to ninety. And agriculture goes from six ninety three to six ninety eight for a hundred thousand dollars of, of assessed value. So, um, that's about as close as we can get to taxes being exactly the same as last year. The rate has gone down, um, but the rollback went up a little bit. So that's what made the net difference. So the other part of this, where I initially started saying you're gonna decide two things in your approval tonight is one, the tax rate that you're going to publish. And this proposal is saying fifteen sixty two. But there's also, uh, if you look in the back sheets of that, um, second packet that I gave you, all of these numbers are broken down by the different funds. And the totals of those, the general fund is a hundred and thirty two million seven eighty five. Activity fund is two point two five million, management fund is three point oh. These are the expenses, these aren't the revenues they're generating. This is the limit of what we can spend. So even if we've got a care- some carryover balance, we can set a limit of spending some of that if we choose. The, all this does is set a limit. Now, what has to happen, and we were talking about that at finance committee the other day of saying, what do we really want our unspent balance to be next year and our solvency rate? And now we were looking at all of the bits and pieces of the line item budget and saying, do we have enough revenue to do all the things that we want and still stay at the balances that we need? And Mr. Young talked about our financial health and solvency ratio for bond rating. And all of those things are very much a reality for us as we look forward to possible actions on the high school. So all of these things have a direct impact. That we have to look at the total financial health of the district, not just make it from one year to the next, but really look out two or three, four years and say, are we trending in the right direction?
So the unspent balance authority, is that accumulation of all of these or just general?
Just the general fund.
Okay.
So I kinda cut off halfway through there, the management was three point oh, sales tax was seven point five million, PEPAL was three point eight. Uh, and sales tax is still, is gonna stay at that level because we're paying back debt. So it's not new projects that make that up. It's just continuing with the program that we had in place. Debt service, um, is that, see, that's about the same between seven point five and seven point three. And the food service department runs about seven point four million. So the grand total of expenditures that would be in the approval of the board action tonight would be to publish at fifteen sixty two and total expenditures for the budget of one sixty four to eighteen six oh four. Now, the challenge after that is internally for us to live within that, use the money as wisely as we can, keep our financial target, history target in check, and study all the things that deal with that. You know, the biggest thing being that we're very aware of that negotiations are going on. And until we kinda know what the state's going to do, it's kinda hard to settle with that. So everything just kinda sits in limbo until pieces of things are decided and then people, then things can fall into place. But we really don't have the luxury of just waiting for all that. So we have to, uh, come up with those areas that we can address. And they go from internal discussions to the finance committee, to the board. And, and that's how we set up a line item budget and decide how we're going to establish programs from one year to the next. So this is, go ahead.
We're restricted to one thirty two even if allowable growth is above one point two five?
No. If it goes to three, the department of management will automatically raise this number. This is based on one point two five. They will make that change. Just for the general fund. That's the only one that's affected by the SSA.
Six.
Yeah.
Okay.
So again, if that, what we were dealing with in past years, if it went up to four percent, that was gonna kick our tax rate way up. That's not gonna happen this year. Because of what we talked about before, but our allowable spending could be affected by that. I did double check and I don't do comparisons with other districts, but I know Cedar Falls prepared their whole budget on one point two five. So this is a comparable of, I think they dropped thirty cents and, but it's based on the same, um, principles, the same level of funding that we're presenting tonight.
Because we can't, we can drop it, but we can't raise it, it wouldn't make any sense. They're not gonna come in at four, it doesn't make any sense for us to come in like that. The one point two five is the, the minimum.
Right.
So
Because if, if we came in at four, we would probably, we would roughly have about two and a half million dollars more of revenue. Of authority.
Right.
And if we based our budget on two and a half million more of expenditures and then it didn't come through, yeah, it's a lot easier to be conservative and work your way up.
Plan for the worst, that's what we said. And we actually are following the law, shockingly, unlike some people down in Des Moines.
Could you go back to that last slide quickly? You had talked about the seven point five million on the sales tax. That is money that we bring in that pays off the schools that we've already built?
Yes.
And then how many years do we have to continue to pay for the schools that we've up to this point?
There's three different borrows that are going on.
And they all add up to the seven and a half then?
For this year.
For this year's, okay.
The seven point three seventy is what they add up to this year. And I think I gave you, um, if you go back about four pages in your handout, there's a table that just has three lines of numbers on it. And those are the three different borrows that we have against the sales tax.
Okay.
And at the bottom of the page is the seven point three seven oh. But the, the length of those, you don't have that detail and they're, all three of them are different. One's a ten year, one's a twenty year, and I don't remember the third one, I don't have that here.
QSCB, I think, was the, um, it was the, when the recession, the federal, not the bailout, but the stimulus. Uh, I think that was for Orange, correct, or Becker?
Yeah, we had a QSCB bond for that, that was, um, a ten year loan. Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was part of the federal stimulus package.
So these are gonna play out at about seven and a half for the next
Yes, it will stay about at that level, because as one gets paid off, we'll kick up payment on another one.
Okay.
To, to get the, all of them paid off then?
As quickly as we can.
Okay.
The line number four, is it Becker?
Yes.
Okay, I think that was it. That one actually, the money we put into it, build up the reserve or whatever, we get that cash back at some point.
Yeah.
But that will go into paying off, that's number four, no, it'll go to pay off three and five.
We believe with, even with modest interest earnings on that, that loan will not cost us any interest, and we may actually make money on that. Of the ten million, or of the sixteen million that we borrowed, it may cost us less than that in the long run by the time the interest helps pay for itself. Because that is set up that every year we pay the interest, but it goes into a holding, a sinking of fund. And we don't have to pay the note until it's all totally due, so we get to earn interest on our own payments.
You recall about how much the sales tax revenue was last year?
Nine and a half, nine point eight million.
Okay.
And that should go up this year with, it's, it's a state average, remember how, when it was initially passed, whatever was spent in Waterloo district, we got that money, and we were sitting at ten to eleven, to eleven and a half million. And then smaller districts in the state legitimately came and said, we live right next to Waterloo, and everybody shops there, but you get all the sales tax money. So after two or three years of positioning with that, the state averaged it out across the whole state, that every district gets the same amount of sales tax money per student. So we dropped down to, from about ten and a half to eight and a half, and now we've worked our way back up to almost ten.
So then where does the other two to three million dollars go if it's not paying off this debt? That goes back into the general fund?
No, it stays in the sales tax fund. Right now, it's working on Hoover.
Okay. Oh, so it is paying for other projects?
Current project. See, we did not borrow any money for Hoover.
Okay, that makes sense.
Good question.
The bus barn, Hoover, we've got some, some smaller projects that are continuing.
Taking other buildings down.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do we see a, an end to that cycle, that we might be able to put some of this tax, sales tax money then toward high school reform?
That's part of the whole plan of what we're looking at in the next, the next go-around.
Okay, thanks.
That's another half hour discussion, so I'll just leave it at that.
Anything further for Michael? It's so dark up here, I thought maybe we were all...
Yeah.
Well, let's say you did not extend the sunset today.
Not yet, it's in the funnel.
Oh, it is in the funnel?
It's in the funnel, last time I checked.
It did make the funnel, so it's still alive.
So keep lobbying, right?
Keep lobbying, that's right.
Well, Michael, I think I speak for all of us up here by saying, I, I really appreciate the time and effort that it took you to put this together and present it to us. It's complicated, Iowa has one of the most complicated school funding formulas, and to understand it, I think, I think maybe I sort of understand it after five years, and being on the finance committee, so I just want to say thank you to, to you and your staff, and it really is important that we get through this and that we can all understand what we're voting on, and so I just really appreciate that, I think all of us would echo that, so...
You're very welcome.
I would, I would echo it, and particularly, it's tougher, a lot of this, Michael, his staff was working on during spring break, with the legislature, with the, the, kind of the stalemate that's going on right now, it makes it tough on everybody to figure out what to do, and finally, we just decided we can't wait anymore, we'll just plug it in at one and a quarter, but it rushes everything that you've got to do.
Alluded to that, we are following the deadlines that are set, but I'd really like our legislators to do the same, so hopefully we can work on that too. There you go, that's great. So the motion on the table is to approve that two thousand fifteen sixteen certified budget, and that will be on our next agenda for April thirteenth, which is three weeks from now. Without any further questions, all those in favor of approving that budget estimate and publication, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That concludes all of our action items for tonight, so let's move on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Lindeman.
And seeing that it's late for everybody, I'm going to slim down some of the things, and first of all, just remind, I just wanted to make sure, I, I mentioned that I hoped everybody had a really happy spring break, it's kind of nice, I'm thinking from the mom's side and also from the superintendent's side, it's just a little chance to regroup, and, so that's great, I hope everybody enjoyed their week. I actually am doing something tomorrow that is really an exciting thing, and I thought, you know, I can share with the, the board later in writing, but I wanted to mention it publicly. I am actually going to expo tomorrow to do an ACEs award, to give out ACEs award, and ACEs actually stands for accepting the challenge to excellence. And it's really for kids who have really done something significant to kind of turn their lives around, so perhaps they've had, they, they got off track on their graduation date, and they just, you know, for a variety of reasons, it could have been personal, or family, or, you know, maybe they had friendship issues, or work issues, or health issues, or whatever, whatever happened, they got off track. And so this is just a celebration of some kids who actually did that turnaround, and so we're going to give some awards to some students who are absolutely on track to graduate in May. So that is a, that's a fantastic thing, I'm really looking forward to that. Just a comment about some of the, the work at the state, there's just so much going on right now at the state level, not only the budget, which is certainly significant, but there's, you know, the start date, there's some still things that, that won't impact us really, but there's still some things going on with that. I actually went down last Wednesday and presented to the senate and the house education committees on the, the assessment task force recommendations, which was really an interesting process. I mean, my first year as a superintendent, and so it was new for me to do something like that. I learned a lot about politics, I thought I knew a lot, and I did not, as much as I thought I did, so really interesting, and since that time, I've had, you know, maybe thirty to forty follow-ups, questions from different people, and it was kind of standing room only. We had the, the education committees from both the senate and the house, not at the same time, but absolutely was packed, so it's, it's a hot issue, and so I, I just, you know, wanted to mention that, I think that's, that's worthy of, of watching, I have no clue, they'll probably settle that about the same time that they settle SSA, who knows, but we'll, we'll wait and see. And then just my final thing is that, I just want to remind people, I mentioned it two weeks ago, but Iowa assessments, the window starts Monday, a week from today. So the window, and, and again, I defined last week for the viewers, that the window is really just a, we set kind of a three-week window, and testing would occur during that time. So each building sets their own schedule, so some might do some pretty heavy testing that first week, or, you know, Tuesday or Thursday, some do a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday combo. So that will happen, the, the first possible day is March thirtieth to start testing, some buildings may kick off that very first day, some may wait till Tuesday, you know, some could wait till Thursday, but check with your buildings principals to find out when the schedule is, and so give your students just a little extra boost at home by getting them to bed a little bit early, I know we're planning to, to do that at my house as well, so that's just a quick update.
And a good breakfast.
And a good breakfast, either at home or at school.
So, all right, I always start with the ends, you want me to start with? No, I was going to say, I was going to start with the middle, actually, tonight, I was going to let either Sue or Mike go first, whoever wants to jump in, because I always start on the ends.
Age three for beauty.
Clarify.
Wow, wow, I think it's time for us to be done.
Well, I just thought I'd mention that my wife and my youngest daughter and I went to the Capitol last week on spring break and really enjoyed the tour there, we spent a couple hours there. Would really suggest that people do that if they go to Des Moines, it was very a learning experience, and get an idea of what the government does in, in the state of Iowa, and how that all works, so I would encourage anyone to, to do that. That's all I have.
Awesome. Andrea?
Nothing tonight.
All right, so now I'm going to go to this side, Mike, I'm coming back to you, Lyle, don't worry.
No report.
I'm worried.
I know, you got your cheat sheet up.
I just want to give kudos to the district as far as, I think we are working towards and being diligent and being proactive, like we have the calendar done, we have the budget set in a timely fashion, and I just, we have programs for kids that are innovative and, and new, and even with the, like, the grant with the sportsplex, it's cool to see the collaborative efforts that we're doing with businesses, providing kids more opportunities, and on a, a note even, activities, my son is a little non-traditional, and he and somebody started an ultimate frisbee team, and the district has been supportive of that, they went out in the community, Jim Lynn bought their uniforms, and they start this Saturday with a tournament in Cedar Rapids, and they have, but I just, the opportunities that the district provides for kids, from, from just sports and clubs, and just passions that kids have that maybe aren't quite so traditional, and I just think that we engross the activities and let the kids be who they want to be, and so I appreciate that in the district, and I appreciate the staff and always being forward in their looking, so that's it.
Thanks, Sue. Angie?
Yeah.
I'm not going to be as long as Lyle, so I just wanted to recognize that Kyvin Gatsin was a national champion from Waterloo, a graduate, I couldn't remember if he went to East or West.
East.
East, yes, I should have known, don't fault me, anybody.
Don't tell Willie.
Yeah, so that's amazing, and then I saw that on Facebook from another national champion who also graduated from East, Haley Ackerman, who was also a national champion, and played this last semester overseas, and is looking, I don't know if it's public, but she put it on Facebook, so I guess it is, looking at starting in Puerto Rico, so expanding that volleyball career into something really big. So just shout out to both of them.
That's awesome. Yay. Okay, Lyle.
Now we only have one item left.
Go.
Just, man, did you mention Kyvin is at Iowa State? So he won the Big Twelve championship, but also, I believe, and I should have read this more closely, he's a student athlete representative, I think, for the Big Twelve. So this is often the case on students that, you know, just have exceptional achievement, it's not just in one area, it's kind of a, it's, it's broader than that typically, so congratulations, I'll piggyback on it. The other thing is just, I think you struck a good balance, the finance committee and Michael and, and the superintendent, on, you know, balancing services we offer with individual taxpayer burden from a household standpoint, but also from a business environment standpoint, so good job on that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Lindeman, do you have one more thing?
No, I, I was just, I couldn't help but think that, you know, our total asking is down by one point two million, and the tax rate is down by, by thirty-five cents, and I think that's, that's noteworthy.
Significant.
So it's, it's definitely significant.
And it shows that we've been good stewards, and I think our public trusts us, which is all good things, so I don't have anything this evening, other than, we will be back here in this room, we are going to take into consideration the Monday night thing, I promise, in three weeks, and with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. And a second, all those in favor, signify?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're adjourned.